Good evening, and thank you for spending your Wednesday evening with the Willet City Council during our regular agenda July 23. I want to report that we just came out of closed session and direction was given to staff. And we are going to start by having the pledge of allegiance going to be led by the Vice Mayor, Matthew Almane.
All right, please stand, remove your hats, gentlemen, and put your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Spoken like a true teacher. Please. The Lords, roll call, please.
Councilmember Burton?
I am here.
Gonzalez?
Present.
Stransky?
Yes.
Almane?
Here.
And Almane?
Yes, here.
The City Council welcomes input from the audience. If there is a matter of business on the agenda that you are interested in, you may address to council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. The Brown Act regulations do not allow action to be taken on audience comments in which the subject is not listed on the agenda. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. While the City Council welcomes public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency, behavior that disrupts, disturbs, impedes, or renders infeasible the orderly conduct of the meeting, and that includes but is not limited to the use of profanity, slurs, yelling from the audience, threatening remarks, physically threatening conduct, or physical or verbal displays of disrespect, will not be tolerated, and the individual will be removed immediately. Is there anyone that wants to speak on public communications?
Any item that's not on the agenda. John, you have your hand up first, and then you're next. Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm John Kabaznikah, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Congress this evening. So, good evening, Council, Mayor Almane. I'm addressing the council to request the ratification of the regulation developed by previous City Council regarding mobile vending. It has become critical that this regulation be recorded as law to eliminate ongoing confusion within the business community about what is legally enforceable and what is not. The uncertainty surrounding mobile vending regulation has persisted for far too long, leading to misunderstandings and inconsistencies along residents, mobile vendors, and local businesses. By codifying this regulation that previous council had developed, we can provide the clarity and authority necessary for all to operate confidently within the established legal framework. I'd like to encourage City Council to act on this matter as soon as possible, ensuring our community has clear understanding of the law governing mobile vending. Resolving this confusion once and for all will benefit both mobile vending and existing brick-and-mortar establishments. Thank you for your prompt attention to this important issue. I trust you will take the necessary steps to ratify and record this regulation for the benefit of our business community. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you're up. Welcome.
I'm Deborah Huddle, and I would like to know if, I'm not sure I can read this, is there, I have someone that will read it for me? Can I do that?
Sure.
Okay.
My name is Deborah Huddle. I am here today to bring to your attention something deeply troubling that happened to me as a former City employee, and to ask for accountability and change. While working for the City of Willets from 2012 to 18, I was subjected to ongoing harassment that made my work environment hostile and emotionally distressing. I followed internal procedures and did what was asked of me, but ultimately, nothing changed. I had no choice but to leave the position to protect my well-being. After that, I applied for unemployment benefits. A judge reviewed my case, considered the facts, and ruled in my favor, confirming that my claim was valid. But the city chose to appeal that ruling. Instead of resolving this matter fairly, the city hired two private attorneys from San Francisco to fight me, a single former employee. They won the appeal, and I was forced to pay back the benefits that was legally awarded to me. I want to be clear, this felt retaliatory. The city used public funds to silence and penalize me instead of addressing the original harm. The harassment I experienced at work, it just sends a dangerous message to other employees who might be suffering in silence. I urge this council to look into how these cases are being handled, how harassment complaints are addressed, and how city resources are used to fight employees in court rather than support them. Thank you for your time, and I hope you will take this seriously, not for me but for everyone else who may find themselves in the same position. I have a package for each of you with all the attached documents. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki, and thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
By all means, sure.
I'm incredibly nervous now.
Take it, breathe deep.
Okay, this is in response to the grand jury investigation management. Hi, my name is Catherine Masiello. I worked for the City of Willets from 2008 to 2019 in the Finance Department doing payroll, auditing, and budgeting, which I loved. However, there was a very toxic, controlling person working there who made my life miserable from day one. Even though they were not my boss, it was very clear who was in control, and that control continues to this day, a total of 17 years now. When an HR person was hired, I thought things would get better, but if anything, it got worse. What a huge waste of money, not just her salary, but all the good, qualified, loyal Willets people who left because of that situation. No one should have to put up with what was going wrong. I absolutely did not want to retire yet. I'd plan to work another five years, but when the new Finance Director was hired, it became very clear, very quickly, that I could and would not work for her. It was the last straw, to name a few. There were comments made about my age and about lowering my pay, all done in front of HR. Isn't that considered discrimination? I totally could have sued the city for that. Furthermore, the simple fact that the Finance Director and HR lived together, there was no recourse whatsoever to fix anything. There was no HR department. And the two people they hired before I left ended up leaving about six months later, which meant no Finance Department either. What a shame. Just because of basically two people and two enabling City Managers? This has been going on too long. I ask you, why was an Assistant City Manager position created? We never needed that position before, and more importantly, didn't have the money for that position. While the intense favoritism and toxic behavior continued, what's wrong with this picture? Well, do you know that hers calculates retirement pay based on your highest-paying job? What that means to me is that this person has set herself up for retirement very well, on the backs of others, literally. I could have had five more years, and who knows who else is affected, including the city's finances. At the very least, this alone should be a concern to you all. Well, hopefully, this person retires soon, and since the HR person already retired, it's totally in your hands now. That is the only reason I am here tonight. I am begging and pleading with you all to return the City of Willets to the government office it should be, for the people, the employees, and especially for the good people of this town. Thank you.
You presented that well, thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Dale Dear. I just want to talk about the Fourth of July parade and the no parking zones that are imposed there. I live on West Valley Street, and the residents there, I'll get a letter saying that there's going to be no parking in front of our houses starting at 6:00 a.m. And there's a bad smattering of no parking signs that are really not very visible to people driving by. So at 6:00 a.m., tow trucks show up on our street and remove any vehicles that are on there with a substantial charge to whoever's vehicle it was that was towed. Then by 11:00 a.m., 100% of the places where people come park are fully parked. The parade parking is there, and nobody is towed from there. Now, I'm not asking for the Fourth of July people that go to the parade have their cars towed. On the opposite, they should have those areas to park in, but the residents also shouldn't be having our cars towed in order to do that. And there's no reason that parade doesn't go West Valley, and it's a wide enough road with people parked there for the detour traffic. So I think it's like, we've always done it this way, and we're going to continue to do it this way, and I think somebody should consider doing it otherwise. I know I have a neighbor whose mother had to pay a substantial fine because she didn't see any no parking place when she went to her son's house, and when she came out, she thought her car had been stolen, and there were other cars in her place. And so I don't know who to talk to about this, so I thought I'd talk to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. I have a question for you.
Yes.
A month before next year's parade, would you be willing to contact us and sit down for a meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. So, my number's anywhere else, so please, if you could leave your number with the Lords, I'll call you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to? Yes. Nikki, you're up, next.
Hi, my name's Karen Kavanaugh, and I'm here on the project of the sidewalk by Pijini in Bechtel and East Hill Road. I have the property just down from that, and I just want to make sure it's on record that I have a problem, that there's no drain put in on that sidewalk going down from Bechtel to East Hill, and it will flood my front yard. I've tried to leave messages for City employees. They've said, and I have it recorded, that they've spoken to me. Nobody's called me back. I left Walter a not-nice voice message because he lied in front of my daughter. Anyway, I just wanted on record that there needs to be a drain. There's a city drain right there, the Pijini drains into it. There's a city drain that goes up on the other side of my driveway. We did a flood test with three buckets of water, and where'd the water go? Right into my driveway. So, I have a video, I have my voice recording of the City employees saying they're talking to me. I have no notice, no written notice of the whole project starting and what was planned, and we're the property owners, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Karen. Nikki, yes.
My name is Nikki Gallo, and I would like to comment on a post that was done on social media where I was named personally by the ex-mayor, including with one other staff. Needless to say that I had nothing to do with the grand jury. Sorry, that's not me, but thanks for the power given to me, but it wasn't me. It is very frustrating to see the statements done from ex-members saying that there is not an issue at the City of Willets. The ones that work here know there was an issue, there still might be some issues. There is some employees that are so still hurt that they can't even show up to a City Council meeting to voice their voice, to make it all right. If you look around, this has been going on clearly as we hear for a long time. All these here have their own story to tell. If you really want to know, anybody can approach me at any time, anybody can approach everybody at any time with their consent. You want to know the truth? Come and ask questions, please. All these here have their own stories, and it's clearly not like what Ms. Sabrina Rodriguez keeps saying, that there is no issues. Again, I'm a little frustrated by being named personally for something that I have nothing to do with, but yeah, if you want to know, come and ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on any items not on the agenda? Jill, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jill Forsico, I'm here representing Louis Caboose, and I'm just, I just wanted to support John's comments on how important it is to have something settled quickly with the mobile vendor issue. We're confused and just don't want to step out of bounds in regards to them, and would like that same courtesy done in return to us. So I just wanted to make sure that you understand how urgent it is, that we do have some sort of clarification on what the regulations are, and I'm just curious when we can expect that, I guess. I know you can't give me an answer now, but it is concerning because it's been going on for quite a few years, and it just needs to be settled, you know, so that we all know where we stand. So, thank you very much.
There anybody else? By all means, come on up, please.
I'm Karen Stevens, and I used to be the HR manager here. I worked here for eight years. I participated in the grand jury report, although nobody should really know who was interviewed because that's secretive. However, when I had a brief dialogue through social media with Sabrina, she seemed to know who was all interviewed, so I don't know how great that is, but I read the report. I think the report didn't go far enough. Yes, as Nikki has explained, where'd she went? It was a toxic environment. It was a toxic environment on both sides of the House, leadership as well as non-management. Obviously, if, there's always two, three sides to a story. You have to look at all the facts. I don't know who was all interviewed, because we're not supposed to, but there were, you know, if you, somebody wants something and you give it to them, you are their best friend. You don't give them what they want, then you're the bad guy. So, there were numerous issues that were dealt with in my eight years that were here, and it didn't go far enough. And there were multiple discussions with our labor group, there were multiple discussions with our legal group, as well as leadership. We didn't always see eye to eye on what was transpiring, but it was a problem. There was a toxic environment from when I first got here, when Adrian Moore was the City Manager. And the problem is that, what I believe is that we had used to live in an area where we just let the employees do what they did, and we gave them the benefit of the doubt based on their skill sets and their knowledge and their experience. And depending on who was in charge of leading whatever the situation was, they became very defensive. So it was truly a fight. So if any of you thought that we were all getting along, that's not true. That's not even close to what's true. But, again, there's two, three sides to every story, and you really have to look at the whole picture. And I know the grand jury's going to meet again, so, you know, I'm also available if anybody wants to answer questions. But really, it's let the people have their say. I know that Catherine Masiello feels very passionate about what happened to her, and I witnessed what had happened to you, and you saw me go after that individual.
Okay, keep it towards the council, please.
I will, shhate. But, again, there's two sides to a story, and I don't want you to read the report and think that it was all a misunderstanding, because clearly it wasn't.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on anything that's not on the agenda? Yes, by all means.
Hello, my name's Stephanie Stambrook, and I have lived in Willets my entire life, and it's really disheartening when you got, when the City Council and everybody is not clear on things that happen, be more transparent. You know, we went from, before COVID, you guys had sent out, the City Council had sent out letters saying that you've been living off the reserves for the last couple of years, and you had to put in the emergency tax, still pay for our police department and stuff like that. Here we are again, kind of in that same situation, but we're 4.2 million old, and there's no accountability, no accountability to the City Manager. Why is she still working? Why is the finance guy who didn't come to you guys when all his power was taken away, and he's like, oh, I don't know what money's coming in or going out? Why isn't he being held accountable? You know, Greta Conne wrote an article in the paper saying that she left thinking that the city was in good position. Where's the accountability for that? You guys weren't in good condition at that time when she left, and I don't understand how you guys did not know that. And you guys are pushing through these projects, like the trail project. Guess what? A lot of people don't want it, especially if we have to pay for it. You know, we shouldn't have to. None maker who's spearheading that, that's his baby, let him pay for it, out of whatever funding he can find. But I want accountability on what's going to happen when you guys run out of money. Then what happens to all of our services? Do they revert to private? Do we lose them? What happens? You know, so like I said, I would like transparency and more accountability coming from you guys and other people. Because with the City Manager, the Police Department came to you guys over two years ago and blindsided City Council with the, that they did not have any trust in him. And you guys, okay, whatever, went on, and you let him stay here another couple more years. You know, and then you had a secret meeting that you posted at last minute with him in here, and then you guys don't even announce that he's gone. It's like, oh, well, no, we got an intern now. Well, what happened? I know you can't release all of that, but you guys can come forward and say something. Say, we've replaced, we're now trying to fix this problem, but no, we don't get that.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, then we're going to move on. We have no ordinances to enact tonight, and we're going to go to the consent calendar. While the consent calendar does have routine items in it, we can pull anything out to discuss it, and we're going to ask in just a minute if you would like that, or if I'm going to ask the councilman. A councilman, mayor, a councilmember may request the removal of an item from the consent calendar for separate discussion and subsequent action. So the following items are going to be on the consent calendar for approval or denial: the City Council meeting from June 25th, special meeting; City Council meeting from the regular meeting from June 25th; adoption of County Mendocino Service Agreement for Animal Control Services within the City of Willets, not to exceed $24,732; adoption of resolution authorizing continuation of municipal operations of another 30 days based on the fiscal year 2425 budget; adopt a resolution to increase appropriations for a transfer of Measure K funds to the general fund in the amount of $2 million to cover the shortfall of general fund expenses; and to adopt a resolution for SHN Engineering Proposal for Construction Materials Testing and Geotechnical Engineering Services for the Rail Trail Program 2021-03 for the amount of $120,275,000. Is there any? Yes.
Mayor, because I have a correction to the meeting minutes, I think I'd ask that all five things be pulled.
Okay.
I don't see anything there other than I would go for the minutes. I attended the meeting, my name is not on those in attendance for the June 25 meeting. So that's my only correction to that.
So, I have no problem with going down each item?
Yeah, I mean, I think all of these are expenditure items, and I think there's nothing incentive about expenditures right now.
Okay, so, we are going to go through each item individually. Is there any public comment regarding the special meeting of June 25, 2025? No public comment? Okay, to the council.
Well, are we going then on to?
We're going to start with item number, small letter I. It's a special meeting with minutes where direction was given to staff was a minute.
Oh. I think my correction is to the regular meeting.
Okay, well, we need a motion for the special meeting because you asked for all five items, so.
Well, we usually do the minutes as one.
They're listed as separate, and we're going to take letter I. Is there any motion for to accept the special?
I like to make a motion that we accept the special meeting minutes for June 25, 2025.
Vice Mayor made a motion. Is there a second? Any public comment? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Almane?
Yes.
Almane?
I. All right, moving on to II, June 25th, regular meeting. Is there anybody who would like to comment on that? Council first, and we'll go to the public. Any councilmember who would like to vote, to speak on the June 25 regular meeting minutes?
Just to add my name to those present.
Okay. Are there any other comments regarding the regular meeting, June 25? Is there any public comment on the June 25 meeting? Hearing none.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the regular meeting minutes as amended by Councilmember Burton.
I will second.
Vice Mayor, second by Gonzalez.
Councilmember Burton?
I.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Almane?
Yes.
Almane?
All right, moving on to B and B, adoption of County Mendocino Service Agreement with Animal Control Services within the City of Willets, in the amount not to exceed $24,732.
I just, I think, I thought we kind of, we were in agreement that we had a freeze on spending, and until we have a budget, I think we can't, I can't support an expenditure for animal services.
Okay, so are you of the mindset of doing without animal control services for the city?
I'm in the mindset that we get an approved budget, and until then, yes, I guess that's the answer.
Okay, now I'm going to look to the police chief, and if you don't mind, could you let us know what the animal control services does, if you know, and then if we went without it, what you would be able to do with your department?
Hello, everyone, I'm Brian Fay, I'm police chief. To answer the question, a research that I did for the last fiscal year, we had at least 83 animal calls for service, and that's not to say that the county came out all 83 times, but they provide services to us, to the Police Department, and to the City of Willets that we don't have the ability to provide. Oftentimes, for example, someone is arrested and they have an animal with them, then animal control will come out and help take care of that animal until they're able to reunite it, either with someone in their family or a loved one, or with the person after, after they're released from jail. So there are times where there's animals that are injured or hurt in the runway, and they can come out and help us deal with that. So, this sounds like to me, the research that I've done, this is a long-term contract that's been in effect year after year after year. There is a slight increase over the last, the last contract that we had, but it is, there's money set aside in the Police Department budget to cover this in the past years, so.
So, Chief, thank you very much for being here tonight. Of the $24,000, that's, I'm just doing quick math, that's approximately a quarter of the cost of a full-time employee.
So they have a breakdown, there's a breakdown in the, I don't know if I have it necessarily written for me, there's a breakdown of what it costs and what they're actually billing for. For salary for the officer, it's $18,000, mileage is another $2,000 and change, equipment and maintenance, so it's all broken down for the services that they provide to the City for animal control services.
To council, obviously, the protection of the public from an animal control situation is important. situation is important. What happens when we have, we're providing a service through the county? We're obviously subcontracting out of the county, and then we stop providing a service? Is there a liability involved with it?
Right, if we don't have, if we don't have a contractor to provide that service, then the duty falls on the city to perform the service. If there's marking dogs, if there's dangerous dogs that are biting people, if there's animals that can be taken care of or not taken care of, it's, it certainly sounds like a nuisance
I don't dispute that. I don't dispute any of it.
Great.
But we got to get our house in order. And I've been, been here for five months now. I've been hearing over and over again that budgets are 30 days off. We got this last budget workshop for the 16th was unknown to me until the morning that it happened, was called off again. So I, the fact that we're in this position is because we haven't been able to address our budget issue. And this is just enables it to go on as business as usual until somehow this mythical budget will appear. And I'm just saying, I'm drawing a line in the sand. I, I'm not happy with the repercussions of it. I'm not happy with the impact to the community, but it doesn't, to go along with it just enables.
To the chief, obviously, if we don't have a service that would be an encumbrance to you and your department, you have the equipment, transportation and so forth?
We do not. We do not. They provide a level of service that, that we, we don't have the expertise necessary to deal with a lot of these situations.
Councilman Gonzalez.
You know, in the past, it's not just them coming up and dealing with, but we're also dealing with rabies situations. And the, and I know that this probably doesn't include the shelter contract, but I, I know that when they come and deal with the animals, they take them down to the shelter, even though we have a portable shelter here. But long-term, I think the officers can take the animals down with them when they take a prisoner down if they need to do that. And I think that when it comes to rabid dogs, that kind of thing, I, while I agree with Bruce, and same thing, I was a little frustrated that the meeting got called off. I had no notice either, or very limited notice, I think, the day of. But I, and while I would like to join Bruce in sticking, what's that, digging in, I, I think this is too important to the community not to.
Any other council member?
Yes. Yes, I just want to confirm with the chief that this is already a budget item from last year's previous budget, correct?
Correct.
So while we are not yet done with this budget right now, we still haven't had our budget workshop, and we haven't approved a budget for this year. There's other reason to believe that this is included in the budgets that we're going to be seeing. We're not starting from scratch, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And we only, we only overspent that budget by $4 million in the general fund.
We didn't, the former council did.
Yeah.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
Yep.
Okay, public comment, please.
Can I?
Sure, I'm sorry, yes.
Point clarification. This one, I mean, we, we all understand the budget constraints and what we're working through right now. This would not have made the, the agenda for consideration tonight, had we not considered it an essential service.
I understand.
That's, I wanted to just.
I understand that entirely. I agree.
$24,000 is not going to work against $4 million.
Okay, and we are going to limit everyone to three minutes, but you can start, Stephanie. Yes, please. And then, Robin, you're next.
My take on the animal control issue and the budget for them is, they have, in previous years, shut down the Fort Bragg overfill shelter that they have because animal control doesn't have the money. They are full completely. So if we okay this and give them the $24,000, what kind of service are they going to get? Or they, you know, because I know it's hard even for the dispatchers to call down there and get ahold of them and not get to run around, well, sorry, we don't have anybody on staff, or different things. We have no room, leave the dog where you found it. So how is that going to work out in those, those issues? Because I've had to literally take a bat in my front yard and chase somebody off because their dog had tried to come onto my property four different times to attack my animals. And I had been calling animal control, and they wouldn't show up. Until this time, I told them that I will kill the dog, which was then my legal right. And so they, they appeared. So I just want to make sure that when this is approved, that those kinks are worked out. We don't have a proper shelter here for them to keep animals long-term? You know, so the shelters full down there, are they going to require us to build one here? And how much more money is that going to be to help the, the overlog of animals?
Thank you.
Robin Leeler, I live here in Willets. I, I want to thank the council, first of all, that Finance Committee meetings were suspended as of last September. So we had not met for seven months. And as soon as you took office, you started regular Finance Committee meetings. I've gone to, I believe, every single one of them. And I would like to note from Mr. Burton's education that if he looks farther down the agenda, it says, adopt a resolution to increase, to transfer $2,000, $2 million of Measure K funds into the general fund. This will actually take care of half of that $4 million deficit. And it was decided at the last Finance Committee meeting, after great debate and input from many experts and people who knew this was the right thing to do, probably should have been done by the former city council, but with the city manager we had, they didn't even know that was a possibility. But that's what Measure K funds are for. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to comment on this, please? By all means.
Tamara Allenees, 145 Tuttle. All due respect, getting the house in order is exactly what was going on at the Finance Committee. Thank you, Robin, for pointing out that we just saw what you're looking at when you're talking about a continuing resolution for the next six months. It included this, and I don't see getting my house in order, having dead rabid pets running wild, harming people and no one else around to fix that. So I don't think we should burn the bridge with the county. They're our partner. So I think we should reconsider. We should agree. And we should continue with animal control services, which is our responsibility. And why we contract out is because it's far more expensive for us to do it on our own. Thank you.
It's not six months, for 30 days. Anybody else would like to comment? By all means.
My name is Catherine Masiallo. Again, as I told you, I was here for 11 years and I did budgeting. I know budgeting, and the police department is very important. We need to continue the services that the city of Willets supply, you know, gives people, not cut those. I'm sorry, I totally believe with you, Mr. Burton, about putting that on hold because, you know, we need to get the budget figured out. But the fact that the police department did have it in their budget, it's been something they've had. I think that that should continue because those are services that people depend on.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this topic? Okay, public comment is closed. Back to the council.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt this contract. I think it's important. I think it's something that, while it's not a Cadillac option, I think Councilmember Stransky in the past has spoke up about his dissatisfaction at times with some of the service. I think that we never, we knew going into it with this that we can't run our own program. And it's, it is a, a situation where we need to provide at least a basic service. And I knew in my time as chief, we sometimes would respond to animal control issues and deal with them with, with what we could. And if there was a situation, you know, sometimes in the case that Stephanie talked about, we would send officers out there, if we had the officer available to descend. And, and if we're in a situation where we're getting X number of service time with animal control, I think, and they're going to deal with all the legal requirements for bite reports and rabies investigations, then I think that, otherwise it falls back on the police department and we're kind of taxed there, so.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, did you have the motion, right? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Allenees?
Yes.
Allin.
Yes. Okay, we're going to go, item number C is in Charles, adopt a resolution authorizing continuation of municipal operations for another 30 days based on fiscal year 2425 budget. And let me tell you what this means, is because we were literally, we had gone several years without an audit, and now the audits are coming in because we're rushing the audits. We couldn't start our 2526 budget without knowing the amount of money that we had because of, to be quite honest, the failure of the city to get some audits. And so the audits are coming in, our finance director is, is pushing on them, we're, we have the 23, we have the 2223, and we're looking for the 2324 soon. And the 20, we're already making plans for 2425. So this is not going to fall through the cracks, and we're not going to be in this situation again, I hope. That being said, what we've said is the, the budget from 2425, we're continuing with this resolution with no major projects started and no, other than critical employees hired. We're not replacing any employees other than critical staff employees. So we're just continuing this until we hopefully get to the budget workshop next month, and we'll have a budget. That being said, our finance director, Manning.
So just as said, this is a continuation of municipal operations for another 30 days. Part of this is also to be able to have a chance to take a look at our cash flows. So on the big sheet of paper that I brought to you guys, and there's others.
You're talking this one here, the big one?
Yes, yes. We go through an exercise where we have cash balances and exactly how much we have in the bank at the very beginning of the year. So in the Finance Committee, we looked at the city as a whole. For this particular exercise, we're looking at just the general fund. The general fund is the one that's being waved around a lot by a lot of these projects. So we've come up with a lot of solutions in order to be able to kind of.
So not the enterprise funds, but just the general fund?
One enterprise fund is having some cash flow, cash flow issues as well. That's the wastewater enterprise fund for the Sizerco project. So that's its own separate thing. Right now, we're just looking at the general fund part of this. So from this, you'll see that there's going to be a pinch point around sometime in September where we will find ourselves dipping under, which will require Measure K in order to be able to correct. So that's part of the reason for the request, is having that available, be able to give ourselves a little bit of a buffer in order to be able to structurally have the, have the fund balance necessary in order to be able to start the budget process with balances that you requested, Bruce. So aside from that, also, we have financials, which is this listing of papers right here. Those are the financials that were actually given to the auditor. The auditor and I work together in order to be able to get cash balances. Because an audit can take up to two to three months. I'm trying for as fast as possible, but it can. So that's all testing and everything like that. So what we did instead was we took a look at it, we had him test very minorly what's going on within, within the financials and the trial balance that we have currently. And he was fairly comfortable with what we had and what we presented over to him so far. There's only three items that were left at the time that this financial, these financials were done. It's fixed assets, and that requires me gathering up NOCs and everything like that in order to be able to make sure that we do the proper allocation and capitalize the assets. There was compensated absences that we looked at, and that's a liability side item. And then the last one is the interest. Interest from the various accounts from either late or from receiving investments that just need to be done. And that's after every movement has occurred, then we do that interest.
All right, we're going to go to the council, and then we'll go to public comment. So to the council, yes.
I just wanted to thank the finance director because the last time he came to us and asked for continuing resolution, it was difficult for some of us to imagine what that meant. We didn't have anything in front of us. We had no idea the numbers. We knew that it was bad, but we had no plan to actually cover. I think that you heard what we were saying, and you produced this document that allows us to see the trickiest pieces of that, which is the cash flow part of it. I think there's, you know, there's two issues that are, that are right next to each other. One of them being the cash flow and the other being the audits. And, you know, we're slowly catching up with, with all those. You know, we could do a budget without an audit, but then we just run into the issue that the previous council ran into. So getting that a little closer by finishing or at least completing our N2324 audit, and then specifically focusing on the cash flow, I think we're putting ourselves in a good position to make, make sounder decisions in the future. So that when we do meet for a budget workshop here coming up next month, that we should be able to reach a budget that will be successful for everyone. So those are my comments, Mayor.
Okay.
To the credit to somebody who talked earlier, losing a finance department has a very, very drastic, bad effect on the city finances in general. When you lose your finance department, we fell behind by three years.
Again.
And when I started, we were three years behind.
And we're hopefully going to be hot up before, before December.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Look at, look at Councilmember Burton on that one.
Pushing.
All right.
You know, Mayor, I just wanted to quickly also share with you that I've spoken to a number of people on social media and throughout the town who have concerns about this. And I was, I often get the question like, well, do you trust the financial director enough? Do you trust the interim director with these numbers? And, and honestly, I just want to share with everybody, my response is no. My response is really, I trust the system. I trust the process. And working with the interim and working with the, with staff on the process that will guarantee us the fairest and greatest numbers that we could possibly get to is really where I put my trust in. So I appreciate you giving this details out here in months ahead of advance because, again, it tells me that you're, you're thinking more than just telling us what, what we want to hear one month at a time, but that you have a, a vision for this and where this is going to go. And rather than scare everybody like it's going to get real bad, it's going to get real good, it's going to get real bad, we can see it in front of us here, we can make those decisions necessary. So, again, I appreciate that, and, and I hope that others, you know, if we're going to start rebuilding this, healing this division and start rebuilding that trust, that we put the trust into the process, and that the individuals, of course, will have to earn their own trust at their own rate. But thank you.
Thank you. Other council members?
I didn't see the warrants for June. What are the total expenditures for June?
Total expenditures, you have the warrants right here, the packet.
Oh, I missed it.
Yeah.
They're in the packet?
They're in the packet.
The electronic packet?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I didn't, I thought I went completely through it.
They are item 6A.
We don't have an extra copy for the council, do we?
They are.
There they are, right there.
It says for me, but they are, James, I do apologize.
So what's the total?
Total warrants? Were around $95,000.
Bruce, continuing on?
Yeah, well, all I can say, Tom, is that I got this stuff at 5:00 this afternoon for this cash flow for, that was given to the Finance Committee last week. And I got this when I walked in the door. So pardon me if I'm not comfortable.
Okay, well, I have the continuing.
Well, I understand that. I'm just, my point is, is that I'm not comfortable doing a continuing resolution because I, I'm, I haven't had time to look at this stuff.
I get it.
So that's my point.
Yeah, I, I agree, I'm not comfortable, but I know that it's a legal requirement that we need to do it, and I, I. And I was hoping that we would get, if nothing else, I didn't expect you'd have good numbers on the 16th, but I figured it wouldn't be a finance committee meeting, it would have been a, it would have been a workshop that we could have got, at least sunk in a little bit some of this, but I get it. So I'm willing to support this, but I guess I don't want the can kicked again next month. I do want to pick a day that we.
Of course, we're going to tonight.
Sorry.
Anything? Okay. Right.
A few things to discuss here on this, I know this is new to you, to us, I got it at five also. Manny and I went over it. One thing is Dusty and I spoke earlier about, I guess it was yesterday, about pushing, getting some extension on the Clean California grant so we can push those expenses back to next year. So those won't be a burden on the general, the general fund until, until the general fund gets healthier. The other thing being that this, this assumes that the rail trail project is completely, is built against the Major K fund. That's what this table assumes, so you don't see those expenses or reimbursements in here. The justification and the basis for that is that it's a wash, right? We're at a point where it's going to be, it's not going to be an expense at the end of the project, it's just going to be paid out and then reimbursed.
Can we get a copy of that contract?
Yes. The other, the other thing here, this is the bare, we talked about bare bones, this is bare bones expenses against the general fund. If you look through it, when you look at revenue, this is not, this is not, this is not, no projects, no additional anything. This is primarily payroll against revenue. So I think, I think some more clarity is needed in the very near future on how that impacts the, impacts the general fund services provided by the city. And Manny's been working hard on that and we're going to have to come back and may ask for a special meeting to go over this, given the potential issues we're seeing in the near future.
As you enter council, because we don't have a budget, we're renewing this every 30 days. Are we complying with the law, sir?
I'm sorry?
So we, to council, we don't have a budget, so we're renewing this every 30 days. Is that putting us in compliance with the law?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, to the public comment. Please, can you come up? I'm sorry.
Just a question for.
Okay, well, you speak to the council and then?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So at the top of this one paper that he handed out, it says no Major K does have rail trails and the rail trail covered by Major K.
Right.
So is that my, that money, like I said, was set aside for the police department, but we're going to use some towards the rail trail?
So I, and that's a fair question, but let me explain. So what this says is the, no Major K put into our budget, but the rail trail, which was approved by the past council, that we're dealing with Caltrans, it's money in and money out. So from here on out, every dollar we spend, we put reimbursement and we're getting money out, so we're using Major K just to finance it. And then when the money comes back, it goes back into Major K.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, no, because I was just going to say, I think that Major K money instead of going to the rail would be more apt to make our parks and other things our, you know, our sidewalks painted. I've counted at least 20 different fire hydrants that don't have red paint anymore along their corners, that that money could be used for instead of going to a.
Thank you, Steve.
You know, drug trail.
Is there anybody else who would like to comment?
Helen Sims, I just have a question for Manny. It looks like there's a one-time bump under the public safety expenses in August, about $80,000. What is that?
That's an extra pay.
Extra payroll?
Yes.
What's extra?
So we pay biweekly and so there's going to be three payrolls within that month.
That's the only time this year?
That was twice because we have, we, the biweekly, there's 26 payments in 12 months. So the other one gets immediate.
Thank you.
Good catch, Helen. Okay, any other comments? Okay, back to the council. Public comment's closed on this. Back to the council.
I would like to adopt the, or make a motion to adopt the recommended action to approve staff recommendations to increase appropriations. Oh, sorry. The.
Continuation of.
The continuation, sorry, I hit the wrong one. Adopt the continuation of the 2024, 2025 budget.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and second.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Alneese?
Yes.
Alneese.
I, yes. All right, moving on to adopt a resolution, this is a D David under consent, but we're discussing, adopt a resolution to increase appropriations of transfer of Major K funds to the general fund in the amount $2 million to cover the shortfall of general fund expenses. Just so everyone knows, Major K meets, we met last month and we met last week. And we're, we have three oversight citizen members and we had great discussion about this. And basically, the bottom line is, this is the purpose of Major K, to keep government running because the city of Willets is not flesh and money right now. And so the Major K balance is around 3.5 million approximately?
3.6.
3.6? I was close. And so this was allowing us to take $2 million from Major K and put it into the operating expenses. This is not for any expenses or any additional projects. This is not for anything extra, no buying caviar or driving Corvettes. This is to keep the city of Willets government operating. Okay, so to the council, Jerry.
Well, I attended the finance committee meeting as the law flower, just listening. And what the mayor said is correct, this is, this is basically to kind of fill the gap. But some of the folks that did speak at the finance committee did say that it had been a while since they had gotten an update on some of this. And I guess the purpose was, when we passed Measure K, was that imagine a bucket with a little hole that, it's dripping water. And that Measure K was supposed to fill in the gap for police, roads, those sort of things that we spend money on and recreation, those sort of things. And along the way, what was supposed to happen is that Measure K was supposed to meet and basically transfer money into the budget, basically to fill those gaps. And from what I gather is, number one, it took a while before we had a finance director and then before we had a Measure K meeting to basically, I'm trying to think of the right words, ad hoc, to basically go over that. And so that was part of the delay. Then along the way, the committee said that they, they were trying to be conservative. They wanted to trans, and again, kind of just compilation of what people said, they thought at times maybe we were flush or not because they hadn't been, hadn't been proposed that, hey, do we really need to infuse this money at this point or not? But in essence, this was money that's filling the gap for prior projects that had already been spent. In a perfect world, I think the former mayor made the recommendation that we don't just open up the old books and put the money where those gaps were to kind of make it right. And I think the discussion that happened there, and again, I'm summarizing, was that, hey, we just need to get it over because we've got this opening up. But I guess I want to go on record that this money should have been transferred over at a certain point infused in the budget so that we wouldn't have had these, I guess, gaping losses there, so to speak. But now it's being done and it's basically filling that gap. But again, it wasn't like they were spending money that wasn't in the budget on some of those things. Some of those things were basically being added in, but weren't, the money wasn't brought over. I don't know if I'm finding quite clear on that one, so. So I support this, but I want to go on record that this is filling the gap on those projects. Not all of them, because obviously, when we would spend things at the former council, the question I would ask is, do we have the money? Is it in the budget? And I would hear yes. So apparently, numbers weren't right, but.
I second that.
You second his motion?
Yes.
Okay.
So I didn't make a motion yet, but.
Okay.
But I guess my motion is that I would, I would approve this, but with that understanding that the record should show that this is filling the gap where it should have been filled before.
And the only thing that I would add to that is, as the question was asked at the financial committee meeting last week is, was any money requested by the past council for the budget that wasn't transferred? The answer was no. So nobody can predict the future, you know, hindsight's 2020. And so what this council's doing is, is trying to fix a problem that honestly was created by many things, such as a two-year budget instead of a one-year budget, such as not having audits done by the former council and, and past administrators. So we're in a situation where, and I understand what you're saying, Jerry, we just can't, we can't look back and say we're going to correct every wrong that's ever happened.
I'm just trying to point out that this is not so much correcting every wrong, but the idea was this, this is shifting money where it should have been shifted before. And the previous council did ask for those audits. I think what, and, and it was previous city manager and it was the current finance director that asked for a two-year budget because they needed that time to prepare those audits.
Well, it won't happen again soon.
Well, and I don't think it will happen again. When we talked about trust or whatever, I think I should have been more of a cynic.
All right, Bruce.
Well, I mean, my point, I guess a couple on this is that, that when they, they came two months ago, we had this discussion on this and we transferred $800,000 out of Measure K for overtime. To true up for 23, 24. No, we did it. We authorized a transfer out of it. We authorized another transfer of a million, I think, last month. And I, each time I ask, I mean, I, I mean, I said when we did it first, we're going to be coming back to this every month. And we're down to 1.6 million. My question is, are we going to be here in 30 days asking for another $1 million out of the Measure K funds?
That's an L.
Do you want to weigh in on this?
In the record, we're not going to be asking for a transfer out of Measure K fund to balance the general fund. I mean, these monies have already been spent. This is just trueing up to make them, to make the general fund look solvent. The monies, you know, we're not authorizing spending here.
Correct.
We're, we are backfilling a line item in the, in the, in the book so that the general fund shows a positive balance.
That's correct. With the caveat also that we will use Measure K as a pass-through for the rails with trails as it's covering the debt of the rails with trails as it's going in and out. But whatever billing does occur from rails with trails goes back into Measure K.
So the first money that's coming back in from Measure K shows it's showing up in September, I think?
Yeah. Wait, wait, Measure K? I think I guess.
Well, Measure K funds come in, but Rails to Trails shows September, a, on the income statement, 822,643 coming back in in September, 1,160,000 coming back in October.
Yeah, those are projected, yes, and those are projected from billings that are, what we're doing at that particular point is projecting the expenses that are going on using an assumption of 5.34 million, if I'm correct on that, as in that's going to be spent on rails with trails throughout now until December. And so with that, we do immediate billing in order to be able to get that money back. With a delay of about a month or two, then we start seeing that money come over.
I get it. And that billing has happened.
Yeah.
So the billing for the 822 and the 1,160,000 has gone out.
I believe the 1,100, yes, I think that's already gone out, yes.
Those two billings are on the governor's desk.
Yeah, go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the 1.16 million has already been reimbursed.
Yeah, actually, yeah.
At the end of June.
Yeah, at the end of June, it's already been reimbursed.
The other, the $822,000 payment, that reimbursement has been requested. So that would be reimbursed to the general fund.
So this 1,162,90 is a different one, or is that showing in October and it should have showed in June?
That would be.
I believe that that is a backfilling from July and a part of June.
Why didn't it show up in July, though? There's no money showing.
When we bill, we don't instantaneously get it. We, it takes a couple of months. And that's why I pushed it out until October.
That's why it makes it really hard, folks.
Well, for example, Bruce, if you look at under FEMA reimbursement, where it says December 294,000, 294,000 on the big sheet?
Yeah.
Okay, so it was pushed out to December because we don't know when FEMA's going to reimburse it, just like we don't know when Caltrans will reimburse it for rail trails. So what, what we've done, hopefully, is take a conservative look at it and push it out as long as possible, but hope that it's going to come in sooner. Caltrans only allows us to bill once a month, is that correct?
Yes.
We can only bill once a month. And last time we billed, we actually got the reimbursement in less than 10 days or so.
Less than three weeks.
Less than three weeks. So it was actually a very quick turnaround. But we're, I just need, and I, and I hope everybody hears this because you've heard it several times, to know that when we hit that 30-day mark where we can bill, we're billing for 100% of the reimbursements we possibly can. We're not letting anything stagnate on a desk.
Yeah.
Cash flow is important right now.
I agree.
Okay. All right.
But I would like, still, I would like a copy of that contract to understand that these are 100% reimbursable, that we're not working against a finite number of 9.2 million, 8.9 million. That's why the, the next item is, is a concern is that it is, I've got no budget, I've got no budget to work with on this project to tell me what the numbers are. All we're doing is, is paying bills as they come in.
Okay, some, some general numbers, not.
I want the real numbers.
Well, but for, for purpose of this discovery.
Yeah.
When the contract was awarded in February, the bid was 8,970 some thousand. At that time, the amount remaining for construction was 9,110,000. There was about a $32,000, $30,000 in the tape dollar, I don't want to call it surplus, but that, there was just enough barely remaining in the construction.
So if this thing has any change orders in it, those fall on the city to pay?
Unless, as was discussed at that meeting, the city can find additional funding to.
Right.
And that was part of the, the resolution that was approved or adopted, excuse me, I think it was February 25th.
Have there been any change orders to date?
There have been several, I don't, Walter, I don't have them off the top of my head, but I know one was a, one was a credit.
We've done several deductive change orders, trying to change the scope of work so that it has lessened and balanced out with, it hasn't been big increases, no. We've been doing deductive change orders to balance it out and cut it down in scope of work, yes.
But, yeah. The fact remains, yes, the city would be on the hook for any, any, anything.
And a $30,000 buffer on a $9 million project is not a typical contingency.
It is not. So another, another point for clarification purposes, at the Major K meeting, we were looking at a table that showed 3.58 million in the Major K fund and a deficit of 1.012 million in the general fund. So my recommendation was to move $2 million. I stated at the meeting, there was no math behind that. There wasn't any, any analysis done. It was to put approximately a million dollars of, of reserves into the general fund, which is less than the 35%, which, which we would prefer, or at least 25%. So, but. So, but the purpose would be to get through, for the general fund, to expenses to be covered through December when the property tax revenue comes in. And that was the discussion at the Measure K meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other council? Okay, to the public, is there... We've already had it once. Okay, so, yes, go ahead.
I want the Measure K.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So with the Measure K money, if you guys move it over to the general fund, I know there's a hiring freeze?
For non-critical...
For non... Well, we'll just go with that.
Police officers are critical.
So are dispatchers, by the way.
Yes.
So if I'm wondering, is that hiring freeze going to come off? Or is it, are you guys going to still extend it out? Because I know you guys do have some people that are leaving over there. And we're totally short, and we have short officers, so...
Okay.
No, I just think...
I see no reason to end the hiring freeze, but a police officer is a critical position. We had a great discussion last month up here publicly about making sure that if we have a police officer who's passed a background and applied, that we're going to hire that person. Okay, thank you. Anybody else would like to comment? Matt.
So I want to just put on the record that the previous city council did not get adequate information about the extent of the financial problems facing the city. And we were actually reassured a number of times that things were looking fine, and we adopted a budget on that basis. So I really share your concerns and your regret that this problem kind of festered without adequate information being received by the city council. And I don't want to place blame for that. I mean, maybe there's plenty of blame to go around, but that's one thing I want on the record. And at the time, since we thought our regular budget was, you know, looking at least tenable, we thought that Measure K funds would all be basically approved one by one for specific things so that the public would know how that Measure K funds were being allocated. That had been the policy up until this new financial crisis became apparent. Under those circumstances, with the city in really pretty dire shape and needing to maintain basic city services, I think it's appropriate to use Measure K funds to fill the gap, to, you know, to make the city able to function. No, you know, no frills and no extra things until you get the budget and all the data that adequately assures us that we can go forward. And so I think the $2 million transfer is basically justified under those circumstances.
I appreciate your talk. Thank you very much. By all means, go on.
I wanted to piggyback off Mrs. Steinberg's comments. We had three dispatchers that were full-time, permanent, for a very long time. And we struggled to hire somebody that could meet the qualifications. And we did a lot of advertising recruitment. We had two individuals that were retired, that were able to come back. One was a CalPERS employee, she was one of ours, Debbie. But we also had another individual, whom my understanding wanted to stop working. They're 12-hour shifts. They're working a bottom. They're working 12-hour shifts, you know, numerous days in a row. If one gets sick, God forbid, somebody tries to take time off, you need a replacement for these individuals. Clearly, I agree with you, but police officers are, you know, the major point of hiring, but dispatchers also...
I misspoke. Public safety is critical.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because that's important. And I'd like to know, does the city have any plans to replace this person that is retired, that came from the county, that was able to fulfill? Because obviously, we still have CalPERS restrictions hiring individuals.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment? By all means.
Catherine has yellow again. I am like in complete shock because when I left in 2019, up until that point, we had audit every year, we had a budget every year. And when I left, there was money in the general fund. Normally, we get taxes and everything covers our expenses. So what the heck happened, is what I want to know. And like she said, needs to be some accountability. And I personally don't like the idea of transferring $2 million to fix this because I don't know everything because I haven't got the paperwork, like Mr. Burton said, to go over it all, but there has to be another way. And possibly transferring maybe a million, which I'm not even for that. But on the basis that, let's get budget and get this figured out. You know, don't just take $2 million and think, we're good. We don't need a reserve. If we can just get what we need and spend it, leave that other money in the account, which is probably collecting interest, why pull that out, you know, to just sit there? So I'm against the $2 million. I'm like shocked absolutely that this happened after I left.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment? Okay. So to the council, any other comments? Public comments closed on this one?
I've got a couple more questions.
Okay, go ahead.
We have three sources of income from sales tax, Manny. We have, you know, the standard old, I guess it would be the first line item, is that your Measure E? I'm trying to figure out which one is which, but...
Measure E is the general sales tax, yes.
The general sales tax. And what's the city's share out of the 9.92 or whatever we're paying now? What's the percentage of that? What do we get? One cent?
Oh, it's 1%.
1%. So, and then the city transportation tax, I believe, is a half a percent?
Yes.
A one-half a cent, I mean. And the Measure K fund is 3/4 cents. Does that tax on the same goods on all three things? Are things taxed in that, or some...
I believe the transportation tax...
Should they track each other, I guess, is my question? Because these numbers don't necessarily track...
They have different items that have taxes associated with them. So I think, I believe the main sales tax is grocery and like other, like purchasing taxes, like general sales tax, basically. The Measure K is also tied on to that general sales tax as well. As for the transportation tax, if I remember correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's a part of gas and anything like that, too, right?
You're correct. Okay, because you're showing a bump... You're showing a bump in August and September in the Measure K fund and...
So in August and September, what I did is I used past, an average of past rates of change in order to be able to predict the natural ebbs and flows of how the cash comes in. And so I took the last three years and used that as my metric.
And, but you did not do that with the transportation tax or the measure...
I did that with transportation tax as well.
You did that.
It's just, it was specific to each of the tax revenue.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other council comments? Okay, we're on consent time. Deas and David looking for a motion.
We had a first and second, right?
Oh, a first and second, all right.
Yeah, I basically...
Any other comment? All right, let's go.
Sorry, could you repeat the first and second?
Okay. Gonzalez makes the motion to approve the staff recommendation to increase appropriations by $2 million to cover the general fund essential services. Basically, we're transferring, again, money that we've already spent already for Measure K allowable expenses in my mind. I believe the Measure K group approved this already, or at least...
And the vice mayor was the second?
No, I believe Larry was the second.
Oh, Larry's second, okay. Okay, so we have a motion second.
Sorry. Councilman Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Alanese?
Yes.
Almond?
Aye. All right, moving on to adopt a resolution or SHN engineering proposal for construction materials testing and geotechnical engineering services for the rail to trail project 21, code 3, for the amount of $120,275,000. Is this 100% reimbursable?
I mean, yes. What we're doing is right now, taking, like I said, changing the scope of work to encompass this. This is critical testing that we expected we were going to have to have. It has gone a little higher just because of some of the field conditions, but it's critical to keep the project going. That's why we're looking at paring down parts of the program and parts of the project to cover it, yes. So it'll be covered through grants, and there's grants from, the SEC grant and a Caltrans grant. So it should be covered by that, yes.
Well, so my question is, if we've approved the rail to trail project...
Yeah.
Why would we have to do an add-on of $120,275,000?
We approved the contract for the contractor. This wasn't part of the contractor's bid. This is something that the city takes on. There was usually a 10% contingency, which we did not have. There was a bid price given by the engineering and design firm, GHD, that did the initial work. If they took on the project management of it, it was $900,000, and we rejected that. We've done most of this in-house, and this was a cost we were going to incur whoever's doing it. It's part of the project costs and everything, but it was not part of the contractor's bid.
Do you have the minutes in front, or do you have the agenda in front of you?
Yeah.
Please tell me, under E item, that that number has one extra zero that shouldn't be there.
1227500, .00.
Zero.
Oh, yeah. No, it's 120,275.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, no, it's not that... And that's for two separate contracts. That's for materials testing and geotechnical testing.
So, I know you use the word "should" to be reimbursed. Does that mean will be reimbursed?
I'm pretty certain we will. We're cutting down, we've cut down several places the scope of work to encompass this, to cover all these things. And we're halfway through there. We're still into the project. We had a meeting today with State of California Fish and Wildlife, looking at ways to eliminate certain walls and things like that, that we're going to cut down hopefully in several, you know, $3,000, $400,000.
Okay, all right.
And so there are offsets we're trying to make, yes.
Okay. All right, to the council.
It's tight, though.
Okay.
I talked to Jim a little bit ago, and I don't think I have to abstain, but I'm going to just because my little window, I think, closes today, I believe. So I have property that would be in conflict, or I did have property, so...
All right, to the council. Any comments? All right, to the public. Any comments on the SHN geotechnical testing? Stephanie, would you like to comment?
I was just going to say...
Please come up to the podium. Thank you.
The microphone in the podium is for the people at home. We can hear you fine.
Yeah, we can hear you, but, yeah, for good.
So my thing would is, you're saying, you guys are saying it should be reimbursed, but is there any way to get some of that in writing that it will or part of it? Then I think it would make the people feel a little more better than just it should. So I know when I do my paycheck, or when I do my monthly bills, it's not, well, I should have. It's like, I know I have.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment?
Did you get multiple bids on this, or just your best?
No, these were qualified local firm. Their prices, they were already involved in the project, and they're the only ones who have a materials testing lab. Their costs are much cheaper because we do not have an outside company coming in from the Bay Area that's going to charge us a lot more on travel time and everything. So this was pared down and stuff and everything. It's very reasonable for what we're getting, yes, and the scope of it. There's a full breakdown of how many times they're going to be out here and their rates. We've compared them to all the other engineering firms that have been qualified through earlier bidding process, and their rates are at the lower end. So, yes. And as things go along, the problem with the project is, is that its fluid is changing. We're finding site conditions that are varied, so it's not something that we could plan for. Some of the stuff is coming up as we go along the project. We're finding site conditions that have changed or were unexpected. So as we're going along, that's why these changes are being made.
Are you saying that the quality of the GHD engineering was better than expected, or...
I wouldn't say that, no. I would not.
But those changes, those changes can just as easily cost more money than...
They can, we're watching...
Engineering design errors or unbuildable design...
Agreed. And that's why we're keeping very close track. Right now, like I said, instead of having another company come in and do the project management of it, which was several hundred thousand dollars, we're doing it all, most of it in-house right now and saving a lot of costs and having more control over it. We have people from my department and from communities development on a daily basis watching it and keeping track of it, yes.
So the, in terms of, I've seen a little work out from East Hill Road, and I've seen a little work from Commercial Street. Has the project been roughed out through the total length?
The whole length has been worked on, yes. Oh, yeah, the whole length has been worked on.
Okay.
Yeah, not just those locations. The entire length has had infill, grading and everything on it, yes. And all the bridges are being worked on, yes, all, the entire length.
Okay. So you think you've uncovered all the skeletons?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've been working those on a daily basis, working those out with GHD, with SHN, with this regulatory agencies, yes. Yeah.
Thank you.
Public comment is closed. To the council. Your motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution for SHN engineering.
With the correct number?
With the correct amount, yes, of $120,275.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
Can I just ask one final question? Is that, I mean, obviously, that $120,000 spread across the whole contract, are those costs reflected in the numbers you gave us?
Which numbers are those now?
On the cash flow projections, the cash flow costs of suspecting the project?
No, they're not, because it's a focus from a general fund perspective, not necessarily from the whole cell. They're not reflected on this because the rail to trails was excluding what is in this cash flow.
They are reflected in our budget, just not in the cash flow.
They are reflected in our budget, but just not in this particular cash flow because its perspective is general fund only.
Thank you. And it'll be requested to be reimbursed at 100% of this money?
Yes.
Until we get the $9 million, $9 million...
On that one, yes.
That's in this one?
And the older one, yes.
And, yeah, so my question is, is the engineer, the testing incorporated in this?
Well, that particular projection is based on over the contract max, so it's...
Based on the $9 million, so...
Based on $9 million.
For the contract, just for the bid price.
It's included.
So it's not included in this?
No, I would sit there and say that as long as they keep it within the $9 million and it doesn't go over the contract, the project amount, and they're looking to try and save money by reducing the project here and there, then it would be included. If they go over, then it doesn't, obviously.
Well, I don't think I agree with you on that, but...
Yeah, the perspective on the projection is the total cost of the actual project, and then it piecemealed out that way. So that's what that's on.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
We had a second?
Yeah, Larry.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
I'm staying.
Stransky?
Yes.
Alanese?
Yes.
Almond?
Aye. All right. We are through the consent calendar, and it's only eight o'clock.
It's really the only thing on the agenda.
No, no, not really. There's very important stuff on the agenda. All right, monthly activity reports. Public interest, we're not going to... Alright, monthly activity reports, public interest, we're not going to be voting on this, but just letting you know, accounts payable, activity is there, as well as building permit activity and business license activity report.
I would like to make a correction on that. The business license activity report is not in the packet, because I did not receive it in time, and I failed to remove it from the agenda.
Okay, so A and B is there, and no C.
It is Jim's.
It says May.
Yes.
Okay. Correction of the agenda, okay. Okay, number seven, commission agencies and authority, any comment on monthly activity report? Public comment? Public comment is closed. Alright, Will City Council meets concurrently as the City Will's Planning Commission and City Will's successor agency. Anything to report? We're just stating, alright, do the city manager report and recommendation? Nothing.
All I have is, all I have is we're going to add a mini-split or something to this room since we can't get the HVAC fixed, so we can control the temperature.
We are going to have air conditioning?
Yes.
Probably right around January when it's cold.
We'll need a heater.
Okay, we'll need a heater, okay.
The plan is to lock everybody here for the budget workshop and just sweat everybody out.
Okay. Is there anybody here, and I'm, I'm going to change something here, we have item number nine, we have A, discussion of potential improvements to state highway 20 through Willets as part of Caltrans. Is there anybody here for that specific comment, for that topic? Anybody here? Well, then we're going to take the other, B is in boy, because I know there are people here for, item number nine is in B, so we're going to take B first. Discussion of possible action of various requests, number V, 2501, to reduce rear yard setbacks at 124 State Street, presenting staff member, SWEETA, Senior City Planner.
We should have Jeff back to just be pretty much like, like, you're. You thought we always had music your first meeting, huh?
Thank you, glad to meet you. Thanks for coming.
Imagine. Imagine my.
Alright, so she's going to be working up. Can you go ahead and start your presentation?
Good evening, council members and all public. I'm Shweta Venturpalli, Senior City Planner with the City of Villas Community Development Department. Tonight, I will be presenting a variance application, P2501, submitted by Mr. Henry Rude. The request pertains to the construction of a detached garage at 124 State Street. This application is being brought before you because the proposed project requires a reduction in the required rear yard setback from 20 feet to 6 feet in the R1 single-family residential zoning district. I'll walk you through the request, the findings, and the staff recommendations. The subject site is located on the north side of State Street, roughly about 70 feet east of its intersection with North Humboldt Street. The. It's going to be a map, that's my impulse.
Okay.
That right there is the vicinity map. This parcel is approximately 0.178 acres in size, and is currently developed with a single-family residence. As you can see, the map, as you can see from the map, the area is primarily residential in nature, however, it does include a mix of other zoning districts, such as MH, heavy industrial to the north, R1 single-family residences to the east and the west, and public facility PF zoning to the south, where Bats Snyder Park is located. The existing development pattern in this neighborhood includes several properties with garages and accessory structures located in the rear yard area, which is relevant to the findings that we review shortly.
Sweet, can you slow down just a little bit while you talk? Thank you.
Which, is it, which one are we looking at?
Look at the house right next to Bear Camroth's house.
It's the gray area right here in the house, right, or one, so that's there.
Yeah. So how are I getting at properties right here? Go ahead.
So just a little project description, the applicant is requesting a variance from section 17.4.040 of the Villas zoning code, which establishes a minimum rear yard setback of 20 feet for properties owned R1, and the proposal is to construct a 760 square foot Z-shaped detached garage in the rear yard with a reduced setback of 6 feet from the rear property line. The applicant cites physical site constraints, including the irregular lot shape, shallow backyard depth, and the need to accommodate onsite vehicle turning without backing into public streets, as reasons for the requested variance. Additionally, this garage will also include rooftop solar panels. Staff has carefully evaluated this request and determined that the required findings for the variance approval can be made, as outlined in the section 17.76.040 of the Villas Municipal Code. This slide is just to provide a brief background on the applicable zoning codes sections. Section 17.14.040 set forth the development standards for R1 zone properties, including the 20-foot rear yard setbacks. And this, and this variance is processed and governed by the section 17.76040, which requires specific findings related to site condition, consistency with surrounding properties, and general plan alignment. Tonight's review is focused on the physical feasibility and land use implications of allowing the garage closer to the rear lot line than typically you allow. Just a definition of what a garage is, according to the section 17.0473O, defines a private garage as an accessory structure used for vehicle storage, either attached or detached. This use is permitted outright in the residential districts. This right here is the site plan. This is the proposed site plan submitted by the applicant. As shown, the detached garage is located at the northern edge of the lot, closest to the adjacent industrial parcel, which minimizes the potential impact on nearby residential properties. This Z-shaped design is not just an aesthetic choice, but it also allows for a lot of, allows for internal vehicle turning, just enabling vehicles to exit the property facing forward, enhancing safety, and this is essentially important given the location's proximity to State Street. Deciding and configurations are carefully designed to maximize the limited rear yard area, which, while still accommodating the solar panel orientation and preserving usable open space on the rest of the parcel. The findings, so the, we can, so according to the section 17.0404O, the findings were made, finding A, which is special circumstances, this finding asks whether there are unique physical or location constraints on this particular parcel that justify deviation from standard zoning regulations. In this case, the subject lot is narrow, rectangular, and shallow in depth, which creates significant limitations when trying to accommodate detached garage in compliance with the standard 20-foot rear setback. Unlike some larger or deeper R1 lots nearby, this parcel does not have enough usable rear yard space to construct a garage while meeting all the setback requirements. Without a variance, this property owner would effectively be, effectively denied the opportunity to construct a garage, which is common and expected amenity in this neighborhood. Therefore, the strict application of the zoning ordinance would deprive the owner of a development right, namely, the ability to have a functional accessory structure that other similar zone properties enjoy right now. Because of these site-specific limitations, finding A can be made. This finding, the finding B, which is no special privileges, states that this finding ensures that the applicant is not receiving any unfair or advantage or being granted rights that exceed what other neighborhood properties have. In this case, granting this variance does not create a special privilege.
Is there maps?
Many nearby properties within the R1 zoning district already have garages, sheds, and other accessory structures located close to or within the rear yard setback. The proposed garage here maintains all other zoning standards like billing height, side setbacks, and lot coverage are fully compliant. The only deviation is the rear yard setback, which is being adjusted partly due to the physical constraints of the lot. In other words, we are providing the applicant with a reasonable accommodation so they can enjoy the same functional uses that other properties in the neighborhood have currently. So finding B can also be made. Finding C, allowing, allowed uses, this finding asks whether the applicant is proposing something that is normally prohibited in the zoning district. That is not the case here. A garage is permitted accessory use in the R1 single-family residential zoning district. The applicant is not asking to change the use of the land, only to reduce the setback distance required for an already permitted structure. So again, the proposed garage is entirely consistent with all the types of structures allowed in the R1 zone, and the variance applies only to structural placement, not its use. With that in mind, finding C can also be made. Finding D, consistency with general plan and no adverse impact, finally, this finding ensures that the proposed variance aligns with the long-term goals and policies of the city's general plan, and that it will not negatively impact adjacent properties. The city's general plan promotes safe, functional, and sustainable residential neighborhoods, and this proposed garage supports these goals by improving safety with onsite vehicle turning space, enhancing energy efficiency by accommodating rooftop solar panels, and maintaining the overall residential character of the neighborhood. In terms of impact, the garage is situated towards the northern property line, which is bordered with a 4.4-acre MH industrial parcel, not any, not another residence, and this placement further reduces the potential for privacy or aesthetic conflicts. This design is consistent with its scale and the use of surrounding structures, and the staff finds that this will not adversely affect any neighborhood, neighboring properties. Based on this, finding D can also be made. In summary, staff has reviewed the proposal and determined that the request meets the findings, the variance findings is consistent with the general plan and zoning code, and will not result in any significant adverse impacts on adjacent land uses, and will support the applicant's ability to make a reasonable use of their property while promoting safe and sustainable development. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission and the city council approve variance P2501 by resolution, subject to the conditions of approval outlined in your package. I'm happy to answer any.
Thank you, very good presentation, thank you. To the council?
No, unless, I think, unless the applicant wants to come up.
Well, I know, to the council, any questions? Alright, so Dr. Rude, would you like to make a presentation, or are you okay with it?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, to the public, any public comment on this variance? A neighbor, Sharon's husband.
And also, it's Sharon's major backyard and a big part of our life, and by allowing this variance, we'll make, reduce the impact of this building dramatically in terms of light, in terms of shade, and the variance would be, help us all to get along better in the neighborhood, and we encourage it.
So you're a direct neighbor of his, do you support this variance?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anybody else who would like to comment?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, to the council.
I would like to move staff recommendations, then we adopt the resolution approving this variance.
So we have a motion, any other comments?
I'd second, but I have one question.
Okay.
I'd like to know when the applicant made the application for this project.
I don't remember the date, what was it?
Approximately.
End of May, beginning of June.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Of '25.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion, second. I want to comment, I, I went by there yesterday, and I toured the facility, I went through the, the old garage, which fortunately neither one of us are six foot four, else we would have bumped our head. And I think that the engineering, or the, the design of this, going through your backyard and presenting you another garage is, a workable garage, because what you have right now is, is not, and I, it was well thought out, and the fact that your neighbors and you have discussed this speaks very highly of the neighborhood, that everybody, to be quite honest, moving it back, doing the variance, will allow Sharon Camroth to continue her good garden, and we appreciate that.
And will it cost us any?
Will not, oh, wow, that's a second right there. Alright, so we have a motion, second, anybody else comment? Alright, so, Phil, please.
Councilmember Burton?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Alani?
Yes.
Almond?
Aye, so congratulations, and thank you for a good presentation. Alright, so we're going to go back to item nine, A is in Adam, discussion of potential improvements to state highway 20 through Willets as part of Caltrans 2028 SHOP project and direction to staff on community outreach, presenting member Dusty Dooley, Community Development Director.
We did it on all the screens.
No.
No?
It's not working.
Makes you wish for the old days of a slide projector, doesn't it?
Actually, yeah, I'll bet with you on that one, Griff. Yeah. We probably still have one somewhere.
You have one of those overhead, uh?
Yeah, it's a.
Opague projector.
Yeah, I'll go snag one from the museum, it'll be good.
You're not that old, Dusty, you didn't know. This was, well, this was it for years, decades, wasn't it?
Well, I've already emailed Apex, fix it.
I really appreciate everybody sticking around for this meeting, I really do. Alright, Dusty, you're up.
And then, do we have Alexis available too? I know, I feel very high maintenance right now, sorry.
You either have that, or you have Alexis on the screen, what do you want?
Alexis, can you hear us? Alexis is with Caltrans, and she's part of this presentation, although, and she's been on the line since, I think, 6:30.
Oh, my gosh, I'd like to thank her, too.
Yes.
I thought it was like AI.
That's what's switching.
Yeah, Alexis, Alexis, turn off the lights.
Willets is creeping into the 21st century, we're not going forward. There she is. Can you hear us, Alexis?
Okay.
She just don't want to speak.
Can you, can we hear you? No, we can't hear you. Are you muted? Are you muted? And are we, we got a volume thing on our end then?
We need a signer.
We could try, that'd be fun.
Get nuisance sidekick. Bruce, Bruce, Bruce.
Oh, yeah, a little bit. Now we just need to turn up some volumes. Yeah, on the other side, you're right there, Dolores, yeah.
Can you say something?
Something?
All right. Welcome, we're glad you're here.
Okay. So, okay, so I get Alexis or the PowerPoint, but not both. Okay. All right, well, man, I spent...
Why don't you do the PowerPoint, and Alexis is now verbal, right?
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Good idea. That was from Jerry, not me.
Dusty? I take my coffee with cream and sugar.
And we can still hear you, right? Or you can still hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Dolores, good job. Okay, so Caltrans staff let city staff know about a month ago that there's a maintenance and safety upgrade to the Highway 20 corridor that's potentially planned as soon as 2033. So I just want to emphasize that, you know, we're talking about this now, but we have plenty of time to think about it, to fine tune, throw in ideas, throw out ideas related to traffic and safety improvements within the Highway 20 corridor here. So I'm going to introduce Alexis in a moment. When we talk about the Highway 20 corridor, we're, Highway 20 runs through our city, the Caltrans maintained, and at the south end, you're at Bechtel Road, Brown's Corner. At Safeway, you head west towards Fort Bragg, and Highway 20 remains in the city limits all the way to its intersection with Blosser Lane. Alexis is going to be speaking in a moment, and Alexis, what I'd like you to talk about is the, some background information on the Caltrans SHOP program, which would be the funding source for this program, as well as the, this 10-year project schedule, and then also if you could further clarify the type or level of feedback that you're, that Caltrans is seeking from the city by this initial August 15th deadline. And then after Alexis is done with that, what I'd like to do is go over, and I'll keep it quick, go over an overview of the types of improvements that may be eligible for Caltrans to pay for in 10 years, that have been brought up by the community in the past and are included in some of our existing planning documents. So with that, Alexis, I'm bringing up the first slide with the background information on the SHOP program, and then as you talk, I'll bring up the next slide on, whatever the next slide is. Floor shows things.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening, my name is Alexis Kelso, and I am the Complete Streets Advisor for Caltrans District One. Thank you for having me here tonight. So, older background, the State Highway Operation and Protection Program, or what we call the SHOP, is our primary funding program in District One, used to maintain the highway. And the types of improvements that are eligible in the SHOP are roadway and bridge, rezilitation slash replacement, so this includes projects to repair and rebuild pavement and bridges, safety enhancements, which include implementation of safety improvements such as guardrails, signage upgrades, and traffic signal upgrades, drainage system upgrades, which includes repairing culvers and diversions to improve drainage and prevent flooding, operational improvements, which can include projects like traffic signals, roundabouts, and other efforts to improve traffic flow and efficiency, bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, which can be the development and improvement of bike lanes, sidewalks, and other facilities for bicyclists and pedestrians, and ADA compliance, which is funding for projects to ensure accessibility for people with disabilities in accordance with ADA. So every two years, we use information on the condition of access to light pavement and drainage to plan for projects over the next 10 years, and then nominate projects for inclusion in the next SHOP cycle, which will be the 2028 SHOP. And based on the projected payment condition, Project 3 Willetts is expected to be needed, and we are targeting 2033 or '34 for construction. So as the Complete Streets Advisor, I look for opportunities to address bicycle pedestrian needs in Caltrans projects, which is why I reached out to Dusty. And next slide, please.
You got it.
Thank you. So this is very early on in our process. Over time, we add more and more detail to the project, but at this stage, we're just gathering basic information on the potential scope to be included in the 10-year plan. When do you want to include bicycle pedestrian improvements in the pavement project? So in particular, for Complete Streets, it would be helpful to know the location and the length of bike lanes, sidewalks, and crosswalks. These are the three elements specifically that we are funded for, and we need to pencil those in now for the purposes of planning our performance and our budget. Other types of improvements, like roundabouts, traffic signals, lighting, landscaping, those are eligible in the SHOP, but they're a little harder to fund, and we'll need more discussion and analysis. However, if any of those elements are essential to supporting the Complete Streets elements in a pavement project, it would be helpful to know that as well by August 15th, because if we can't fit those other elements into the budget, we'll still do the pavement project, but we'll probably need to do Complete Streets improvements in a different community. So that's the first August 15th deadline that you see on the slide. And then the next step is for Caltrans to begin writing the project initiation document, which we plan to start in the spring of next year. The project initiation document, or PID, is used to add more detail to the project scope, schedule, and budget, so that we can program it into the SHOP. And the PID isn't really the best time to figure out what to do on like a scope level, but more of what are the resources for how to do the project? For example, what environmental studies will be needed, how much time for design, how many parcels are affected for right-of-way, that kind of thing. So if there's any additional planning or community outreach that the city wants to do before adding Complete Streets to the pavement project, to address kind of that what is the scope question, the best time to do that would be between, be between now and the start of the PID. So you'll see on the slide that there's that April 2026 as a deadline for the city to complete planning updates and engagement. And after that, our schedule is to start the PID in May of next year, finish it by June 2027, and then program it into the 2028 SHOP. At that point, we can start the project development process, beginning with environmental, and then it goes through design and right-of-way over the next several years to be ready for construction in 2033 or '34. So that's a quick summary of the SHOP and our schedule, and I'm happy to answer any questions, but for now, turn it back to Dusty.
All right, I'll keep going, or council, any questions?
To the council, any questions?
Keep going.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Alexis. So again, this could be as simple as a repaving, restriping, upgraded to signage project, or we could look to try to throw in some of these other traffic improvements into the project as well. So the first slide I have up here is, this came out of our Main Street Corridor Plan and actually has roots further back with the Bechtel Road Railroad Corridor Study in 2003, I believe. And so this is showing a conceptual plan for a roundabout at Brown's Corner, and you can see you have sort of this gateway monument, this landscaping, and the benefit from this could be that you have that continuous traffic flow going through the roundabout, it's, you have, you're improving safety through slower speeds entering our city, fewer crashes because you don't have those head-on collisions, or fewer crashes at least that would result in loss of life, loss of life or major injury because you don't have those right-angle collisions or those head-on collisions, and then certainly creates a space to create that civic gateway and create aesthetic enhancements and landscaping opportunities like you see here. This is the conditions there. Now, probably most of us know at times it can be difficult to take a left-hand turn off of Bechtel onto Highway 20 South Main Street. Some people actually go through Harris Manor and come out on Monica Lane to make that left-hand turn, so a roundabout would certainly help that situation. And what's, what I just learned is that Caltrans is actually, if I understand correctly, is looking at creating roundabouts in smaller footprints, so not as big as the ones you see like on Highway 20 when you're heading out towards Lakeport or Nice. And so this is showing, again, this is very much conceptual, but it's showing a perspective roundabout, again, without the landscaping gateway, but that could be included in that yellow circle there in the intersection. But what it's showing is that it could be done within the existing Caltrans right-of-way, so you're not having to encroach on private property to complete that type of improvement. So that's something we could request to be considered as part of this project, again, at Caltrans expense. So same idea, but different location. This is looking at the intersection with Blosser Lane and Highway 20, so we frequently, this is the crossing over to the Blosser Lane School. Appreciate Caltrans making some safety enhancements there with that crosswalk, but you have folks that have been coming over from Fort Bragg, they finally get to that nice straight stretch, and oftentimes they're going a little bit faster than they want to as they enter into our city. So the roundabout could serve as slowing that traffic, identifying the fact that you're coming into the city, and then provide for a safer opportunity for pedestrian crossings there. So again, this is a conceptual plan by Caltrans, showing the opportunity to complete that type of improvement within the existing Caltrans right-of-way. And again, the idea would be to put some sort of gateway, you could put the "Welcome to Willetts" sign, whatever you, whatever the community thinks is appropriate. Again, focusing on the Main Street Plan, this is now looking at North Bechtel Road. We're aware of, there's some undeveloped lots in that area, including the old Scroggy Brothers Parcel, that would be great to see developed in some way. So there's opportunity to see increased traffic beyond what funnels out of North Bechtel Road currently. I think it serves as a level of service D at the moment. We have increased traffic from the CCC campus going in, the hospital, maybe even the PG and E yard. So probably ideally, we'd be looking to seek a traffic signal improvement at this location. This really isn't appropriate for a roundabout, I don't think, but certainly something that could be explored. But a cheaper alternative might be putting in this median, creating a, being able to create a safer crosswalk, but in this scenario, you'd be restricting left-hand turns out of that North Bechtel intersection. And then there's also, as part of the Main Street Corridor Plan, we're looking at a focus in the Archway property, formerly the Remco property in the Walnut Street area. The city's long been looking at creating a safe crosswalk near the Safeway Walnut Street area, given that you have a lot of kids that choose to cross the street there rather than walking down to the light at Highway 20. So if there is an opportunity to create a safe crossing there, we would be interested in seeking Caltrans' help and studying that, and then potentially building that as part of this project. There's also ingress/egress improvements that could be completed within Highway 20 to support future development at the Archway property there. That property does serve as, for a potential commercial use in the future. Right now, when you come out of Franklin Street, you have restrictions going left, and any development may be, you know, subject to completing some type of transportation improvements at that location. So if there's a way to get ahead of that issue and support some improvements, that's another key recommendation that came out of the Main Street Corridor Plan. So I wanted to highlight that. And then I think lastly, there was talk about doing, reducing the number of travel lanes along Highway 20, also known as a road diet. So there you have some of the benefits that can come from road diet. I think the one that people seem to be most excited about was being able to create space for landscaping, including street trees on that side of town. Right now, I don't have a photo of it, but you have very narrow sidewalks that don't allow for street trees to be located, because then you can't maintain the ADA access. I mean, the location now where you could put in landscaping and street trees is really on the private property side of things. So, you know, we could explore, you know, opportunities to work with property owners to see if they want to do that, maybe for a tax incentive. But otherwise, we need to create additional space within Caltrans roadway to create those opportunities. By doing that, you're also reducing the speed of traffic or keeping it to the posted speed limit. It can result in potential benefits to local businesses, if people are slowing down, they may notice and pull into businesses. It makes it a little bit more pedestrian-friendly potentially, and maybe that's a benefit to local businesses too. This is just a quick example that we pulled from Willow Creek, so you can see they reduced two travel lanes and they were able to put in some street trees. So getting down to the recommendation here, what staff's really looking for is concurrence or support from council to go out and do some public outreach, meet with the business owners, get their opinion on these improvements, any other ideas that they might have, hold at least one community-at-large meeting, and then continue to coordinate with Caltrans to provide timely city feedback. So one strategy could be to kind of just, by this August 15th deadline, to kind of throw all of this at Caltrans and say, hey, this, these are all things that we're considering, and then take that, that year after the 15th to meet with the community, meet with business owners, pull things back, put things in, fine tune things, but maybe we kind of throw everything in the mix now and keep it eligible for discussion moving forward. So that's staff's recommendation.
Dusty, can I just say this? You have to say, with no consultants and using city staff to take care of this stuff. Because this is a kind of project where somebody would say, well, I don't have time to do it, and then we're going right down to the trail to guide us to where we are right now. And this is a, and I know Caltrans is listening, but this is a no consultant project. You know, eight years out, we don't need to finish. So I just have to say, that's the most important thing to me.
Not, don't need consultant time, not proposing consultant time, and proposing to spend Caltrans money, not ours.
I really am a fan of those two roundabouts.
Yeah.
Myself. I, I think that the rest of the project, I mean, I think that's the core of what you presented, and I think your approach is right, you know. And the smaller footprint, I like that idea better. I mean, it won't be have as big a statue of the mayor, but we'll get used to it.
2033, not Utah. He's talking about the town.
I can guarantee you.
But I just put my two cents in on that right now. I really like the idea of those two roundabouts.
Sure.
I want to concur with Bruce. We've been talking about that roundabout at the original, yeah, Blosser, the original Highway 20, and then we had further discussion back at the south end as to what was intended years ago, and it seems like roundabouts were off the table at one point, but if they're on the table, I'd like to pursue them. And then, I know that we took a lot of grief as a council for the road diet project before, so I really would like to tell Caltrans, we're interested in everything, but then take that year to really interview our, our business people down at the south end, so that we can get their buy-in. I honestly, when it came back to us before, we, we got deluged by a lot of the public who seemed, and some of the business people down there, and if that's changed, then, I know we were referring to an old plan, and I know it was on the shelf, but every once in a while, we need to dust them off and see if everybody's still okay with that. So I agree with your tactic, and I would support it, but I like the idea of the roundabouts, number one. That may in itself feed the diet concept as kind of a must-do, in which case it'd be easier to support the diet concept down at the south end if it involves the roundabouts, because, yeah, I've tried to turn left off of Bechtel Road to head out of town, and there are times I just have to make a decision that I'm going to wait until it's completely clear and not get upset. Not everybody does that.
Any other council comments? To the public. Question, Stephanie, by all means.
Can you guys take it up? I'm okay with the roundabouts, but I know that there's plans to put more housing in on the other side of the Mormon church. So there's only the two entrances right now into Sandy, into Harris Manor. And the one that you turn off to go to the church, that turn lane there is not very long. So it would be nice to put in future to make that longer, because that's 45 miles an hour through there. If you try to go into that left lane doing 45 and try to stop in time, you're not going to do it. So a lot of people are getting over, crossing over that double line back further to make that left-hand turn into the, so that would be a big help, too.
There will be many public meetings where, you know, and we'll have meetings down there, too, to let people, because Caltrans wants to make sure things are safer. Any other comments? John?
Thank you. Good evening, John Kavaznikah. We have interviewed through the Chamber of Commerce many people down there at the South End, and they would really like to see traffic slowed down and more crosswalks, because people can't walk down there and cross the streets safely, and they can't ride their bike down there because they're risking your life with the speed of traffic. So traffic calming measures are going to be welcome down at the South End down there. It'll really help Commerce, too, because people will be able to walk and move around safely, back and forth across the streets, and, you know, like I said, ride their bike down there. Right now, it stops at Highway 20, right? And you can't get down there on a bicycle safely. Seeing kids ride a bike down there, it's not safe. So this is an exciting idea, so I look forward to seeing it evolve and come to life.
Thank you. Anybody else like to comment on this? All right, so this is a no-action informational thing. Thank you very much. Dusty?
I don't know that you need to vote on anything, but it sounds like, from what I heard, is kind of move forward with keeping all the ideas that were presented alive, meeting with the community as outlined, and then come back and report to council before making our, you know, any further commitment to Caltrans a year from now.
That's exactly it, because the agenda item does not mention action. It's just discussion, and give direction to staff, and I think everybody agrees you're on the right track.
Okay.
Enthusiastically.
Yes, and Alexa, thank you for joining us.
Alexa, one question.
It's Alexis.
It's not Alexis.
Alexis.
Somebody was going to do that.
We're going to take off, yeah.
Is she there?
Which, are you still there?
Yeah.
Is Matt Brady still the District One Director?
Yes, he is.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Alexis, thank you very, very much. And we're sorry we went so late with your topic.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, moving on to Department Monthly Reports. I don't think we have an airport, hey, Sereza, I need you to just stick around, please. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, so Airport, no report, Rec, Commander? Okay.
We have some updates, if you want.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
There was a DOT inspection that was just done recently. Our crews have been doing fire protection work and remediation up there right now. They just had the airport meeting with the tenants. One of the things that we're going to be bringing forth at the next meeting is there's new ordinance that they've been working with Jim Lance and the FAA in regards to trespassing, that the FAA has requested. So that'll be brought forward at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Community Development, is there a report?
You have a report in your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions? Finance, is there anything additional? Police Department Chief, anything additional?
None, unless there's any questions.
Chief, seriously, we heard several complaints about the stringent parking enforcement before the parade, and next year, a month before the parade, we'd love to have, to be reminded of these so we can, you know, either put out barrier tapes so people don't park there, or we look at the realistic place where we don't need to tow cars, so.
If not sooner, maybe we'll get ahead of it.
All right, I like that.
Just add something to that. We've already talked about it. I thought Frontier Days was fantastic this year, attended really well. We just got to keep the trucks off the sidewalk.
And next year is a 100th Frontier Days.
Parking area.
And it's going to be a biggie.
And it's a 250th year anniversary.
Yes, in America. Services and Facilities, anything?
If you have any questions, nothing additional?
Nothing. Utilities, okay. Moving on to City Council Announcements, and that's why I ask you to stick around here. I'd like to ask ad hoc on food truck, if you're available on August 12 at 3:30. Are you available August 12 at 3:30 for a food truck ad hoc meeting?
At 3:30, yes.
A sentence I never thought I'd say. And then also Budget Workshop for the council, I'd like for you to look at August 20.
What day of the week is it?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. It's a regular finance. This would take the place of having a finance committee, but this would be from 10 to 4.
Is it a second or fourth Wednesday?
No, I think it's a third.
Third Wednesday.
Does anybody have a conflict with August 20?
They'll be working, but I'll be taking that day off because it's their priority.
Okay.
So I just wanted people to know.
Is school back in session then?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'll be working both times, but that's part of the choices I made, being elected official, and I have no problem with that, but, yeah.
All right, is there any public comment? Anybody comment on either the food truck or Budget Workshop? All right, that's.
What can I add?
10 to 4?
10 to 4 for Budget Workshop?
For the food truck?
3:30?
Thank you.
3:30.
So what, what time?
Food truck, 3:30, Budget Workshop, 10 to 4.
10 to 4.
And I know John Kavaznikah left early, and he was asking, so could we get a comment? So that's all I needed you for. Thank you. Okay. All right, who wants to go next? Yeah, Jerry.
Well, more of a request. We've had somebody write us regarding wanting a variance, something put on for variance regarding parking for a business down at the South End in the old Oddfellows Building.
Okay.
I'd like to see that come before us at some point or have planning.
Yeah, okay. So it's actually good timing. So you have a letter from a gentleman who has done everything right, and we're coming up against an issue that's come up before, and staff is going to be recommending some proactive changes to city code starting at your next meeting. So what situation is, you have an individual that purchased, I think it's the old Oddfellows Building, fixed it up. He's got two businesses that are looking to go in there. There might be a way to support one of them, but they don't meet the parking standards. So the variance process takes, it can take three and a half months. If staff's on it, we can reduce that time. I think you just heard the timeline from the one more recently. But the code changes that are going to be presented to council, we're looking to get those on the next two, at the next two meetings. Let's see here. So hopefully, that issue can be resolved, not only for this property but for others. So just to kind of talk about it in a broader sense, one of the issues with filling vacant commercial buildings is that oftentimes they've been built out to the edge of lots, and there's no opportunity to provide off-street parking standards. So certainly, we can prepare a variance and go through that process. You have to provide legal notice to the paper, you have to put together staff report, you have to notice the neighbors, you know, you have to do some checks and balances on some other things, but, and that's what can get you to a three-month timeline. Sometimes you have other projects in front of you that you have to get to in order, and so that can add a few extra weeks as well. And that's enough of a barrier to where properties don't sell or businesses don't fill those spaces. So what we'd like to do is present to council the opportunity to waive off-street parking standards in the downtown area when those situations exist where there's no real opportunity. So don't want to get into the full discussion now, but we're preparing that discussion for you at the next meeting.
I'll bet you that'll be received very well by this council, to say.
And this is from Larry, and staff and myself have been in contact with Larry.
But we don't need any consultants for that, right?
We don't need any consultants for that. I've got Sueda and Connor, they're great planners.
I get it.
Provided we got them, we can get a lot done. Thank you.
All right, good, Jerry. Is there anybody else that needs to talk about the City Council Announcements, communications or reports?
I have one about wastewater and wastewater.
Go.
Walter, you want to help me out with this, with a Little Lake Mobile Home Park water connection update?
So about a year and a half ago, we were trying the state of California State Water Resource Board to provide a possible water hookup for the Little Lake Mobile Home Park. They had a failing well and did not have adequate water, and then at some point, the well did fail, and for the last year, they've been trucking in water at a substantial cost. It's an at-risk community, elderly, low income. We looked at the situation and agreed that we could probably provide water under certain conditions. One of those is getting permission from LAFCO to sell water outside of our district. The state of California has offered, it was twofold. They would offer water, they would pay for the whole project, we would have no costs and everything, but we would maintain a line then to the Little Lake Mobile Home Park. If we did not go into that agreement, they could force us to do that and not provide any funding. So it behooves us to go ahead with an agreement. There's also additional funding that the state can provide for upgrades elsewhere in our system, so it makes sense. It's about 19 hookups. They did a preliminary report with their engineer. They looked at alternatives, whether doing a water hookup from our line that's at the edge of town by the mini-storage place, that's where our last hookup is, or doing a new well, and it's more cost-efficient and long-term. Water safety is doing a hookup to the city. So we're looking at that right now. It's a long-term project, it'll probably be two years before it would go out to bid. The city would not incur any costs. The state of California would be paying all the costs to put in the line. We would just be later on, it would become one of our customers, and then we'd have a master meter, and those customers would be paying city water rates. So we're working on that.
This Mobile Home Park, again, where?
It's at the end, I don't have the exact address.
Can I ask your place?
It's the Little Lake Mobile Home Park, it's at the far end.
By the cul-de-sac, yes.
Yes, by the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, I thought that's where it was.
Yes, yes.
We took, we have water out as far as Walt Neeson's place at one time.
Not that I know of. Right now, our main only goes to the mini-storage.
They were private, I think what it was is that your main goes there, then there's a private.
There may have been a lateral bit.
Yeah, we don't have anything past that right now. The line would be about one mile worth of line.
There's a long story.
I was told the reason Schmidtbauer has to put in a pond is because a hydrant in front of the high school is one of the least effective hydrants that we have in the city.
I don't know about that part, that's not something.
I'm telling you that, and so that's why Schmidtbauer's going through the process of getting a pond for the new log ear. So that hydrant, that water pressure on the north end is less than certainly what it is.
I don't know, I'll have to check if that's the same line. At that point, and, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I'll have to check into that, because the high school put in a tank because of the fire flow.
That's right. I don't think they ever put water in it, though.
No, but then we replaced the main from, from commercial all the way to pass the tennis courts, and can be fire flooded.
Okay.
So a very clear, we did a hydrant test and what the actual flows are there.
All right, thank you for that, Jerry.
I have two things, when I had LAFCO on the 7th, and it was going to be really big, but, and UConn decided to hold off on their annexation sort of stuff, so got pared down. We did meet with the Chamber, Rod and I, on the 17th. It sounds like they would like to pursue the concept of entertainment district in the, like, they want to start out with small steps and maybe using the city lot to do an event, maybe a weekly, maybe during the summer kind of thing, and it sounds like they may, they've got a concept in mind, but something that wouldn't be burdensome to the city, and so they'll be coming back to us with that concept. Rod, could you?
Yeah, use the Van Leeuwen parking lot as the venue, as the stage for a band, and have essentially what Cloverdale does, First Fridays kind of events. I think it's a good thing for local businesses.
We encourage them to meet with the chief to talk about, you know, as far as alcohol sales and that sort of thing, so that they can work.
I would think it would be a good project for the city to partner in, to help stimulate local economy.
And that's all I got.
Okay.
Anything? We can talk about that as the ad hoc for the mobile vendor also.
Right.
You know, do something like that. We have an MTA meeting next week that I'll report on at our next council meeting, and as you already heard, we had a Measure K meeting and a finance meeting that was thorough, and we're going to have our Budget Workshop on 20.
And I'm on MCAG, and if any council member wants to take MCAG from me, I would, I really would buy you dinner. But I mean, I'll keep doing MCAG until somebody wants it. You'll do it?
Yes.
I'll buy you dinner. Okay. Dolores, you got that?
Put me down.
Oh, thank you. It's a handshake deal with a hamster. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Dolores?
Didn't have a chance to.
We also make sure Bruce gets told about the water wastewater. I still, it seems like I get reminders, but it should be going to him.
We got that straightened out.
All right, Good and Welfare.
I have one, I guess, under Good and Welfare would fit. I would like the council's permission to direct the city attorney to do a little research on the positive and around the issue of charter cities versus general law cities. I think, to me, I've been reading some about, we are a general law city, and a charter city has some intriguing aspects to it, to me, and I would.
Did you get that information I sent you?
Anyway, I think that it would be in the city's interest to do a little.
Bruce, as long as the city manager is aware of what you're asking for, then that's fine. You can ask it.
Okay, thank you.
Any more Good and Welfare?
I just wanted to share with Good and Welfare, you know, that I had an opportunity to visit our city water and wastewater facilities, took a little field trip, and just wanted to thank Walter out there for educating me on a lot of these things that we need. It's actually designed for Mendocino Office of Emergency Services. They were looking to get a grant, to write a grant to help us with our, doing out the areas that are vital need for our water and wastewater structure. So I took that opportunity to kind of educate myself and go out to those backwoods and up those roads and through the bridges and stuff, and if you ever have an opportunity to do that, I encourage you to do so, too. Then I would like to encourage my other council members to look into that as well. It's very educational, and now we have places, names puts places to each other, so thank you for that very much.
All right, no more Good and Welfare? This council meeting, what?
Just want to add, there's also Willits Smith this Saturday, 12 o'clock, Rec, there are lots of bands and excitement and things to do, and a beautiful Saturday in Willits, so if you have family or friends, please invite them over. Thank you, sir.
8:57, this meeting is adjourned.